The meeting will come to an end. Please stand and join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the five
States of America, interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the review of justice.
Board members, if we could please read together the mission statement. To unconditionally nurture our students to be successful, proud, and prepared to thrive. Donna, roll call, please.
Director Allison, here. Joe Belai.
President.
Corey Gish.
Here.
Dave Appleton.
Here.
Kathy Henry.
Here.
Ryan Hulaw.
Here.
Larry Jameson.
Here.
Daniel Parker.
Here.
Gary Spoh.
Here.
Thank you. Before I start into the agenda, just one housekeeping item before I forget, because I will forget. Was the talk about the microphones before? We talked about maybe wanting microphones for every board member and participant, so we don't have to pass them. My understanding is the microphones are $550 apiece. So do I have anyone that wants to buy microphones? Or my suggestion is we just be patient and pass them around and wait. Is that okay with everybody? Or does anybody want to make a motion to spend $550 a pop on microphones?
I'll go without it.
Yeah, but just remember, the whole issue is, is that we can hear each other, but people at home can't hear anything people are saying without the mic. So you just have to be diligent and wait for the microphone, and I have to yell at you if you don't do it. I prefer that.
Is that hanging, or is that individual?
That's these things right here. If we want one of these for everybody. The question posed without the mic was, what were hanging microphones, what would it cost me? And I don't know that. The $550 was for the ones we're holding now. Joe said it seemed like a lot of money. I didn't do the check. But anyway, if somebody's interested in buying the mic, so they wanted to do light work and put the motion, let me know. Otherwise, we're going to keep doing the way we're doing it. Okay, if you could look at your agenda, item Roman numeral five through 10. They are all ministerial approvals of minutes budget transfers, which I believe there are none. Is that correct, Stephanie? There are none. And then the treasures report, September activities account, September school lunch account, and September general fund. I propose that we lump those together and approve them together on a motion, unless there's an objection. Do I have any objection to that? Do I have a motion to approve items, items five through 10? I have a motion from Dave, second from Gary. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passed. Communications Intermediate Unit.
There is nothing to report at this time.
Career Center.
No report this month.
Legislative Report. Don't forget your microphone.
A few things. On September 30th, so you all know, I went to Erie for the Knox Law Municipal Symposium. And I went to the sessions dealing with school districts. And the three sessions that I went to, one was on the new Sunshine Act amendments and some changes that I think we need to go over sometime. Also, one of the big sessions was on investigating teacher sexual misconduct. And which I was amazed that they said that 50% of the cases of discipline in the last three years involved sexual exploitation of students and sexual misconduct. And, but it was a good session, especially on the Sunshine Act amendments. And so I'd be glad to share that sometime.
Why don't we do that now, Gary?
Oh, okay.
Why don't you just summarize that? I have a general understanding, but why don't you, I'll share that after you're done. Why don't you give us a general update?
Okay, I'll just give the top two things, because there was quite a bit. Act 65 requires the school district to post all agendas for school board meetings on its public website at least 24 hours prior to the meeting, at the location of the school board meeting, at the principal's office of the school district. Act 65 requires the copies of the agenda also be available for the members of the public who wish to attend the school board meetings. In addition, the school boards can no longer take action on matters involving school district business that are not included in the posted agenda. This is subject to three exceptions for the following items. Emergency business relating to real or potential emergencies involving a clear and present danger to life. Business arising within 24 hours before a meeting if the matter is and does not involve expenditure of funds or entering into a contract. And the other one was business arising during the meeting if the matter and does not involve the expenditure of funds or entering into a contract. And then there was a few other things, so mine.
Right, that's my understanding of the nuts and bolts for us is, in the past, we've been pretty open. We're kind of a smaller group, and under Robert's rules, there's more leeway, more flexibility with the smaller groups. We can make motions, add things to the agenda, things like that. That, in reviewing this and what Gary's saying, I do agree with what his summary is, that we can't do that. You just, you can't do it anymore. We have to have a separate meeting. If we don't have it on the agenda 24 hours in advance, you can't make a motion, add it to the agenda now, even if it's a great idea. Now that being said, we can talk about it. So if you have something to talk about, we can talk about it all day long, and it won't violate Sunshine, so nobody can complain about that. But we can't take that final action to hire, fire, spend money, et cetera, until we have a meeting and the agenda is posted 24 hours in advance.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
There's others, and if anyone would like copies of any of these items, I'd be glad to get a copy for you.
Just had a question, maybe something old. In the past, it was talked about the legislature having, if parents wanted to send their kids to an outside summer school, they would have to pay for it themselves. Did that ever go anywhere?
Nothing yet, absolutely nothing. I don't know. They're dealing with other things in the legislature right now.
It's been around for a while, right? I mean, several sessions, it keeps coming up, but for whatever reason, it doesn't go through.
Yeah.
Why, I don't know either.
Yeah, there's, it's still ongoing. I keep checking all the time, so. Another thing for the board to be aware of, that the Pennsylvania State School Board Association, by unanimous vote, has pulled out of the National School Board Association because of the Attorney General wanting to stifle parents and constituents from speaking and addressing the board on different issues. And they have voted to do that, which I was surprised that they did, but they did. The last thing I have is that there is going to be an update to the national sex education standards. They were updated in 2016. I would, my recommendation is that we don't really follow them down the road. 40% of the country only does now. They are, I hate to say it, very inappropriate and appalling. And even like for third grade teaching about hormone blockers. Sixth grade teaching, they should be able, in sixth grade, to define oral and vaginal sex and all kinds of things. It's just, when you get up the road, up the grades, it is just appalling. But the most damning thing, I think, is that parents do not have a right anymore to be involved with this. And so I would say if this gets passed, which I wouldn't, I think it will, that we don't abide by it, so. And that's the last thing I have.
Okay, thank you. CLAEA Representative.
See if that works. Oh, it did. I was afraid to touch it. Thank you. We are plugging away, doing our best at educating our students every day. It's hard to believe, it's almost the end of the first quarter, so time is flying. I also wanted to let you know, our association is sponsoring our trunk or treat event tomorrow night. So I helped organize that, and we are providing some treats, as well as some of the high school student clubs are participating in that. So we're hoping for the rain to stay away and looking for a good event. Thanks.
Thank you. Building Committee Finance, Dave.
Okay, got the microphone. Is Bob here? No, okay. So we're not going to have a complete report, because we had a SiteLogic in yesterday to meet with Bob, and they were doing some walkthroughs with Bob. SiteLogic is a second company that was referred to us by our solicitor to get a second look at things. I guess what I'm going to do before I give a wrap up is, I'm going to ask the people that were at the meeting, that got to see both presentations, we'll start with Gary. Your opinion on it, Gary?
Well, I think it was very well done, and I thank Dave for having us there and doing this, first of all, and for even having the teachers' union represented there. I thought it was excellent, and one of the things I liked was that the second company, which is Site-
SiteLogic?
Yes, that they have an educational program that goes along with their building program, where students actually can be part of it, that they actually do some training, have some classes, and even kids who are wanting to go into the different construction or other areas that they deal with, right there, they can be involved with. So it's hands-on for the kids also. And plus, the price was a lot better than the first company. But I, I think that's so important for technical training, for our kids to be involved. And I thought it was a really, really good program that they're offering us.
Joe, you were there, but you only got to see one presentation, so you asked to pass on this. So I'll go to Kathy.
Okay, I think it was good to have a second group come in and have a discussion with us. I think they brought some things to the table that maybe we had not thought about before. I have to say, I'm going to have to agree with Gary and his comment about students and education potential or technical skills, because we all know that everybody is not always college-bound material. And I think if we can help our students in the technical area and get something done for the district here as well at the same time, I think that would be an amazing thing to do. So I was very open to everything that they had to share, and I look forward to see what, what they bring back to the table for us to look at.
Larry.
So I would, excuse me, I would agree with my colleagues, what they just said. I would also, I'm very anxious to see the numbers that they bring back. I'm anxious to try to, as best we can, which will be difficult to make an apple-to-apples comparison. They had a couple things in there that, you know, we hadn't heard about before, so. And as difficult as that's going to be, I'm very curious to see the numbers. But it was a good, you know, very good presentation.
Amy, you're not getting out of this. You were there.
I was just pleased that you and the committee reached out to another company, because we had one that we were dealing with for so long, and we, it's always good to take a look at others. And so that we were able to see both, and both were very attentive to what we were asking for. But SiteLogic seemed to be more attuned to the specifics of what we were asking for. And they have been great, they've come on site twice, very, very professional, and have been very diligent in getting the information gathered, so that we'll soon have that.
With time and stuff. Yeah, it's your turn.
You didn't give me a fair warning.
I didn't give any.
I guess I have pretty much the same thing to say everybody else is saying. I was appreciative that there was two companies involved, and the second company, I thought, brought more to the table with interest of our students. Also, grants was a big thing that I was impressed with. They were willing to help us write grants and help us fund the program, so I was very impressed.
Jonathan.
I'll simply be repeating what everybody else already said. The second company was very flexible to our needs. I appreciated their focus with working with our students to, to build the structures. And whenever they started mentioning all the different grants that they could look into for us, it seemed like a tremendous resource for us, and I was very excited about all those different opportunities. They spoke about a lot of different grants. I think that'll be very important.
To wrap up the committee report, I was hoping, like I said, Bob would be here, but SiteLogic brought up things that I ask questions of other companies about grants. And I will, sorry, Stephanie, correct, not help us write grants. They write the grant. They have a grant writer right in their, in their company who writes the grant for our, for our school district. I'm excited, like Larry, to see what the numbers are. Stephanie and Amy have done a great job. They're getting the finance discussion together. We will be having another meeting whenever SiteLogic gets back to me, and they're ready to do a full presentation. I recommend that every board member is at that meeting. Because this is one of the, the biggest expenses you're going to vote on, besides your year-to-year budget, but this is a big expense, and I think every board member should be there. And I also have talked to Steph, and she will have a pack ready showing you what it takes for this to be affordable for us to do. At that point, we can look at whether we want to take things out of the project, add things in the project, but we're mainly concerned about one building right now. There is a security thing we are checking on to, into on the second building, but Bob Coleman assured me, because we're not spending our fund balance down to do this, that he can keep the second building going, so that we can get one building done right, instead of doing a half a job on each one. And I think that's important to the school district. That's it, Nathaniel. You have any questions on the board?
Open floor, anybody? Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Appreciate the time. Brian, Curriculum Committee.
Well, we had a meeting, and Robin Filman gave us some good background on the Common Core, and that's where we started. I think she did a lot of the talking. I kind of expected, I came in with a lot of, personally with a lot of preconceived notions and learned a lot. I, I think it's a bigger animal to tackle than, than what I expected, for sure. And it's going to require more patience than, than what I, what I typically have, so. So.
Now you know why I appointed you, right?
Yeah, yeah. I guess I'll, I'll take the bullet, but in any event, I think we're going to learn a lot. I think it's going to take, in my estimation, three to six months, just to get up to speed on what's going, going on, before making any decisions as to what to do or how to move forward, because I just think there's a lot to learn, and before I know, at least personally speaking, before I know what's going on with us, I can't really critique it, and I have to have the best knowledge that I can in order to, to make a decision, and for us to make a decision as far as what we're doing right and what we're maybe able to do better.
I agree absolutely, you have to have the facts, so. I don't have, I don't perceive a time issue. Do what you need to do to get the background, so that your committee is comfortable to bring our recommendation to the board. And obviously, it'll need to be vetted publicly to everybody, so, you know, getting it right the first time is important. So take, take whatever time you need. Okay, next page, item 12, Student Board Representatives.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. The high school clubs have been asked to help with tomorrow's trunk or treat, and the high school students are excited to dress up, to hand out candy to campers students. Also, during the past week, the fall sports that have their senior nights, and at Friday's home football game, the seniors of cheer, dance team, band, and football are being recognized. And Mr. Aaron and Mrs. Thussel honored the students last week, honored the seniors last week for our attendance, good grades, and behavior by giving us cookies. And we all very much appreciated it, and everyone was very thankful for that.
Thank you.
So the volleyball team is 11-2 and on their way to playoffs, along with the girls and boys soccer team and the football team. Our very own Clarion Lepson Youth Council took a trip yesterday to discuss this year's theme, drug and alcohol prevention. Youth Council also has their first trunk or treat next Friday during enrichment. The junior class has decided a prom date, which is Friday, May 6, 2021, at the Haskell House. A concern from one of the students is that the activity bus and elementary buses are unavailable due to COVID, meaning students cannot stay after for tests, clubs, or other activities, because they don't have a ride. Therefore, they would like you all to consider either providing an activity bus or allowing students to go on the elementary buses again. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing the concern to us. Obviously, Amy's writing it down, and we'll get back to everybody on that next time. Richard, Management Information Systems Director, report.
The MIS department, with the combined efforts of me, Megan Staub, and Michael Bertoni, have rolled 52 tickets in our ticketing system since last month for teachers and administrators. As well, I answered numerous questions and been answered via email for students, teachers, parents, and administrators. We have begun work on visual updates on the school website, as well as PR outreach on the social medias. The MIS department has been working with the music department and maintenance department for future development of the auditorium sound system. We have been working out with the elementary and high school secretaries and administrators to deliver yearly state reports on time. We have been working with setup and distribution of nine new Chromebooks for the special education department, as well as setup and distribution of two iPads for special education and two iPads for the athletic department. We have been working with the guidance department, as well as administrators, to prepare and assist teachers with end-of-quarter grading. And we have received six previously unreturned Chromebooks for the 2021 school year. This brings down the total of unreturned Chromebooks to 20. Four Chromebooks have been invoiced to students and parents. Two Chromebook, two missing Chromebooks were new with a value of $239.25, for a total of $478.50. And 14 missing Chromebooks were two or more years old with a depreciated value of $161.40, for a total of $2,259.60, and brings the total missing Chromebook value to $2,738.10.
Thank you. Any questions for Richard?
I just want to thank the board, because we have a wonderful IT team. I'm sure you probably have heard about it. Mr. Comston and Ms. Staub are fantastic, they work well together, and very quickly respond to our needs and have great vision for our, our district in the future. So congratulations, and thank you, Richard and Megan, for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, Business Managers, report.
As you know, we've just been busy working on the finance side of the possible projects, and we're in the middle of working on our audit and closing out the next school year, so.
Thank you. And now Superintendent slash Administrative Team, and I won't leave any team members out this time. Amy, are you starting, or I guess I'll let Amy go with it from here?
Okay, I'll speak first for the elementary school. As Rhonda Shook mentioned, we have quite a few events coming up, and the first is tomorrow from 4:30 to 5:30, and that is the trunk or treat. That was organized by Rhonda Shook and the Education Association with assistance from high school students. Next is also tomorrow, we have the Scholastic Book Fair from 5:30 to 7:00. That has been organized by our librarian, Pete Baskin. And ongoing throughout the evening, we will have a pumpkin decorating contest that was organized by our sixth grade teacher, Charles Turnbull. Kids can bring their own already decorated pumpkins from home and put them on display in the cafeteria to be judged. And they're allowed to wear costumes, but costumes need to be school-appropriate. Then next Thursday, we have our harvest party, and it'll be from 6 o'clock till 8 o'clock. That's for grades four through six. Pizza and water will be provided at the harvest party, and that has been organized by, and sponsored by the PTO. And also, beginning Monday, is Red Ribbon Week, and that's where kids are encouraged to remain drug-free. Thank you.
One big thing that we could have, that we've talked about before in here, for the senior high, junior senior high, is the- Coaching, and I also praised him and thanked him at times, but that's an arrangement paid and a volunteer. You board members, even if I disagree with you, I appreciate the time you're doing. Well, I want to talk about the Chromebooks. I read that article two months ago, and I was fuming mad, $15,000. And then I come to a board meeting, and the explanation just didn't fit. I appreciate you found some of them, good information. But we're still at a $3,000 loss by your own numbers. How did we not give these to a student and write down, you know, Mel Aaron, Chromebook number one, you know? Dave, Chromebook number two. I run fantasy football leagues more organized than this. And the politician-style answer of, well, they depreciated, so it's really only this cost, that doesn't cut it either. You're not going to go buy them, replace them at the Hazen Flea Market. You're going to replace them on what a new one costs. So that $3,000 number, that's a politician's answer that you know isn't legitimate either. I did not, I don't want to attack anybody personally, but you guys make a good salary. It's public knowledge, you keep this stuff organized. You make about three times, four times, what the taxpayer, who pays that, makes. And to just talk about $15,000 like it's nothing, that, that hit pretty hard. The people who pay the taxes, that pay the salaries of all this administration, who for the most part, I've had two kids go through this school, one's almost done, I'm very, very happy with. That I just wasn't very happy with. And we sit at our kitchen tables, and we have to have conversations like, you know, the boys need haircuts, so we'll have to have eggs twice this week, or got to get the oil changed in the truck, so can you get another month out of those shoes? And to hear how cavalierly $15,000 was spoken about, it's just wrong, guys. And the, and the article in the paper had a lot more people fuming than me. I just decided to come out and talk about it. So can we be a little bit more cautious with people's money, and a little bit more open about the explanation? I don't know what all you guys do for a job, I don't know, I don't really care. But I know if you made a $15,000 mistake at your job, you're probably out of a job. I know I am, next day, not even next day, later that day. $15,000 mistake, and you're going to send me back, I promise. Not me, everybody. I didn't see a corrective action. Maybe you have one, you didn't tell me, that's fine too, I'm not, I don't work with you guys. I didn't see a corrective action, I didn't see a head roll. I am blown away at that. I am blown away that we can just ignore, I don't know, maybe there was something I don't know too. But $15,000 is a big number, guys, a big number, and I appreciate if you put a, at least put a little more sting on it than the explanation I got. I appreciate this school. I did have somebody tell me, by the way, you shouldn't talk up there, they'll come after you and your kids. My one kid's gone, the other one is as mentally tough as any boy who ever walked this hallway, and I'm not really somebody who gets gotten going after, so I ain't really all that worried. I do like you guys, I got friends up there. But I didn't like that answer, and I pay my taxes, so I have a right to hold this microphone. So appreciate your time, thank you, Mr. Parker, for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is BJ Ren, and I actually live in Clarion Borough, but my son Cole is a member of the football team, the Killbahn.
Well, sir, I, I can't let you speak. If you're not a taxpayer, we have a board policy, I can't, I can't let you talk.
I, I wrote a, a letter to the board that I believe you received.
All the board received it, yes. All the board members received it, and I can tell you that the concern has been addressed. Your concern is with the ambulance at the football game, correct?
Correct.
There's going to be an ambulance at the football game.
Okay.
So we, we, we've addressed- So we, we, we've addressed the concern.
And moving forward, that's the case as well?
That's our last home game for the year, I believe.
Will, will that be addressed moving forward in the next?
I anticipate it, but I mean, we're not in the point of planning for next year at this point, but the issue has been addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. That concludes public comment. Item fifteen, uh, old business, the Betty Wilson Scholarship Issue. Amy and I just received the solicitor's feedback, I don't know, a matter of hours ago. Not, not a tremendous amount of time, so it has not been sent to the, to the board members. So I guess I'll, do you want to talk, Amy? Do you want me to handle that? Okay, I figured. Okay. Basically, what we're looking at to recap is that we have a community member who was very generous and donated money to create a scholarship to honor his wife's memory. His wife was Be- Betty Wilson. That's why it's called the Betty Wilson Scholarship. It's a significant amount of money, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars is currently what, what we have, so it is, it is a very generous gift. The concern that was raised, which is a legitimate concern and, and a noble pursuit, was it's not generating a tremendous amount of interest. What I believe would be an understatement, correct, Larry?
I would call it one of those.
Okay. And the reason why, and I, I learned all this in the past, because we had this discussion. I talked to the solicitor, asked him to give us the opinion. I've also printed off the statute. I understand now there's a statute, twenty-four PS four dash four forty point one, which basically in investment terms, it handcuffs us. And I'm sure there's public policy reasons for it, but the bottom line is, we can't take any type of a risk, basically. We can only invest in government bonds effectively, government-backed securities. It's all spelled out in more articulate terms here. But that's the reason why it was invested the way it was, but the goal or the option we're looking at is can we work with the foundation somehow who doesn't have the limitation to get a greater return for our students, our community, and at the same time comply with all the rules and regulations. And the summary of what the solicitor, if I, and I did a quick skim of it, I did not read it in detail, but a quick skim of it is he's telling us that his opinion is we can't do it. Because of the lending limitations, the, also the uh, the requirements of the trust, that he, that the trust was specifically listing Clarion Limeson School District as a beneficiary. Um, I believe those were the two major concerns. And so his, the end result is he's telling us, it's his opinion, that we can't do it. We can't even consider it. That's my understanding. Amy, would you agree with that? Amy is saying yes. So with that being said, sorry to be a downer, to be downer on everybody, uh, but is there any? Anybody want to have further discussion on this or uh, question, anything?
I, I just have a couple of things I'd like to say. As I guess not, maybe not even so much as a, a school board member, but as a treasurer of the foundation and what I personally do for my work every day. So this, this money was uh, received as a bequest gift before the CL Foundation came into existence. I believe that's correct. Right, yeah. Okay. So obviously there were no other options. A school district per the solicitor's report, which I, you know, he's a longtime attorney. I, I'm not, I, I'm not going to disagree with that. I do want to reach out to a couple of other school districts that may have foundations, just to, I'm just curious to see how they do it. The reason I say that, twofold. Number one, um, while I agree that a school board can only invest in certain government-backed, uh, bank-backed, uh, items such as certificates of deposit. Certificates of, certificates of deposit generally will not keep up with inflation. So um, while you may make one and a half percent, even, even a average conservative investment, you should be able to get five or six percent. Now, all this has to do with the students. While this can be given out and has been given out to the stus, there's potentially a day that there will not be any money there, uh, if it's not handled correctly. The second reason I ask this is, in my job, I have spoken to a donor of mine that is going to be leaving our school district some money and some other school districts. So the question I will have either to Mr. Beard or to whomever, who should she leave it to? Because if, if it's left to the school board, um, I guess it depends, I shouldn't say school board, the school district. It depends on if the person wants to leave the money in perpetuity. To which, if you're going to leave it in perpetuity in an endowment and you can only use the interest out that endowment, you're not really getting that much money every year. If you can dip into the principal, which I don't recommend in endowments, in fact, by nature of the beast, you don't dip into principal. That's a whole different, whole different ballgame. The foundation did receive some of the Wilson money, which we are using for life skills, uh, projects right now. But that has a very finite life to it as well. I guess I would also say that uh, that this is, this is an incredible opportunity for our students if we can do it correctly. And maybe we can. I'll, I'll do, you know, again, all due respect to Mr. Beard, but I'll, I'll check with a couple of places myself just to see if they do it differently. Different attorneys, and we have two here, different attorneys have different opinions. So um, I, I just want to look into that to see if we can do the best that we absolutely can for our students. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
I have one. How did the foundation get money from the same benefit if the foundation was not in fact in there when the money was given?
I can tell you that answer because I, when I first came in, JJ was still here. And what had happened is there was some um, monies found in the house, I believe, when they went to the house and cleared out everything. And at that point, the whole bequest had been done, wrapped up. So that money was put into an account at the school that Mr. Johnson and another person in the business office who's not there right now um, used for the life skills and for our um, what do I, the greenhouse. When I became superintendent, I didn't feel comfortable with a checkbook to do that. So I suggested that it go to the foundation into a separate account. And that is just for, it's called the Wilson Fund. It's separate from the foundation fund and we use it still for the life skills and for our
We have two funds at the foundation, general account, Wilson account.
And I'll just ask this question too, because I, I did look at the, the trust document, which is interesting to say the least. I don't read any limitation on invading principal. Do, do you guys understand that there were limited to interest only? Does anyone understand that there's that limit? Are we, has somebody, as an attorney, as a solicitor, judge, has somebody told us that we, we are limited to only handing out the interest as scholarship? Or is it, my understanding is it's, it's very, very broad. It just, it shall be used to establish a scholarship and that's, that's the end of the word.
The will states that the money shall be used to establish a scholarship in my wife's name.
In memory of my wife, that's what I was reading. Right, it doesn't say anything about you can only touch the interest. It doesn't say only get so much of the uh, principal. So I don't know, but there's, there's a committee, right, that's set up? That determines criteria for who gets the scholarship and how much is spent? Is that correct? That was mine.
There was one and then um, board members went off and then I came on. And we, one year I think we had the whole group and then the board president did some things and said, well, let's, we didn't have a lot of people that were applicants. So we have been giving it just to the stu-, to the students that apply for education, any education. So we haven't had, and we've talked about this is going to be a concern in the future, very near future, no one's going into education. And so there, we gave it to, I, one year, two people applied, three students applied. That was the most that applied, so that's what we've been doing. We haven't needed the committee.
I believe that years ago, uh, Mr. Johnson set up criteria to this. Uh, and everyone just kind of happened and then it went long and, and dawned on me, if I remember it. One, one scholarship had to go to a student in education. And one scholarship had to go to a student going into the ag sciences type of situation. But um, so that's what, certainly what I was told. And then when I, when I asked to see the copy of the will, um, it, it doesn't, that's what a committee put forth. But what the will puts forth is scholarship in my wife's name. So my idea on this was to be able to give money to every student in the grad, in, in every graduating class that is going on to further post-high school education. And by that, I mean college, university, community college, um, technical school, trade school, anything that they are going to, to help them out. Not just a few. So um, I, I was trying to make it as broad as, as we can of, you know, this, last year's graduating class, I believe had fifty-eight students. Of that, I don't know the exact number that were going to post education. Mel, any ballpark gets on that?
Here, here's my suggestion, because I, I think that's something we can get into. My suggestion is we, let's ask the administrative group to take a look at this and brainstorm and get some ideas, some hard numbers, proposal, because I don't see any reason why we can't, and I think we should, take a look at the criteria. What are the criteria? And we need to promote it so our kids know about it, so the kids are applying. Because it's doing us no good to set the money in account and make a half a percent. You know, we need to be getting out to the kids so they can get educated and move on with their life. I mean, that's, that's the goal. And I think we should start by having the admin group get a proposal to us, because ultimately I believe it's up to this board to direct that.
I, yeah, I, I don't know if there's an, an active scholarship committee or not. I, Dave, you've been around for a while. Does that ring a bell for you?
There was different committees that worked with different, I mean, I know the teachers have a scholarship. I know back then we had a Laird Wolf. We had a um, a lot of different ones through the years and I don't know where the funds ended up. Uh, but I also have heard, and this was a problem back then also, and I'll still disagree with giving out to everyone because I feel people need to learn that they have to earn what they get. Okay? If these two young ladies want a scholarship, write me an essay that I can read. And I was on the Laird Wolf Scholarship, so I did read through the scholarship essays that was sent to me. I hear now that the guidance office posts scholarships, that they get no one that'll write an essay to even get it. Okay? And what's that teaching people? You know? Um, I gladly look over essays. And uh, in fact, I'll be honest with you, uh, both my sons were very close to Laird Wolf. And when I got the essays in, I had the two of them read over them and help me make the decision along with administration. So, you know, I don't see a problem, but I think that they should have to do something, not just give it to every person moving on. I think they should have to write an essay or do something, you know?
I, I don't necessarily disagree with you. That, that would be a matter for the committee, whether they, you know, how we, how we do it. I know this past year, I believe there were about five students that received it at about five thousand apiece. Does that sound right, Stephanie? So if, it, it was pretty significant. I guess I'm more about sharing the wealth, uh, number one. And, and uh, that, you know, we can certainly help a lot of students. The other thing I would say about this money and why I was so, am so adamant about trying to do something more than certificates of deposit, time value of money is one of the greatest concepts you can ever learn. And so this six hundred thousand or whatever it is in ten years could be one point three million. And that's not even on difficult investments. Um, I'm just saying there's, there's a great opportunity. Again, we have our, we have our marching orders tonight from Mr. Beard and so that's where it is. But research never heard anything. My recommendation, which, my microphone went off.
It's Rebecca's phone.
Yeah, I'll give it to Rebecca. She'll fix it. She's my virgin. All right. My recommendation would be after a reorganization meeting in December to appoint a scholarship committee and let them work on the different scholarships with the guidance counselor and the administration. That would be a recommendation I would make, but that would be after the reorganization.
We, we still have enough time to get everything ready for this room? Amy's saying yes. Okay. I mean, what's that? February, Donna, Donna's saying February is when, okay. I, all right, I mean, it sounds, I have no problem with it. I just think we should do something. I agree with Larry's initiative on it. I think we need to do something, not just let it sit there. Larry, you maybe also want to check out that there's subsection B of this. It talks about investing the money with a company that is managed so as to maintain its shares at a constant net asset value in accordance with, and then some federal code, which I know nothing about.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I
So I don't know if that's, if that's something that we could, even a couple of percent, like you're saying, over ten years is huge, so. Okay. Anybody else have anything to add to this discussion? Okay. That concludes old business A. New business, section sixteen. I'd like the board members to take a look down through because none of these items require a roll call vote. So the entire remaining agenda, A through K, can be done on a voice vote. So if there is no objection, that's what I suggest we do for efficiency purposes. But if anybody has any items that they'd like to pull out, talk about, question, give me a few minutes and let me know which ones they are and we'll go according to them.
I'd like to pull out I.
I is an expulsion, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Who uh, is uh, Ms. LaCombe in, going to be in for? I'm cu-, I didn't know. We needed a long-term sum. Elementary special.
The concern is we might not be able to say that. It might be an employee issue. Dave, are you trying to break it or what?
Yeah, I want Richard to have something to do.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I have a question about letter K.
Okay.
Um, because I was
Do you want to just pull it out?
Can we just pull it out?
Sure, yeah. And then we'll have a full discussion on it when we get to that.
And then I just, it's not really noted, but I'm hoping uh, letter D, those um, salary, those um, yeah. Those monies that are listed there are what's currently in the supplemental, correct?
I believe that's part of the collective party.
And they're the same as before.
Stephanie is telling me what I understand to be true as well, that item D is salary Stephanie is telling me what I understand to be true as well, that item D salaries are in the collective bargaining agreement. Which, is that F? Or no, is that the?
Yeah, item F.
Okay.
Isn't that already our budget to have those activity buses?
These are, Amy, I'll probably just let you.
I need to talk to Celia because I'm not, we do have activity buses. I'm confused. Did you say they wanna ride the elementary buses?
Um, I've just talked to a student. He said there's no activity bus for them, so I have no idea. It was a subject that came up in my English class. 'Cause one of the students, there was a test and no one could stay after because there was no transportation. There was no activity bus or elementary bus that could ride, so I don't know.
Okay. We don't do the activity bus on Fridays. I don't know if it was a Friday.
Friday?
Yeah. Um, but, and I know that we've allowed students from the high school ride the elementary. So if, I would love to find out who that was and talk to them.
Okay.
And then, because we do have, it's not an activity bus, it's an activity van now, correct, Stephanie? Okay.
So maybe the students just don't know.
Maybe they just don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll let them know.
Okay. I'll talk with you.
Thank you.
Did that address your concern, Corey? Okay, so we're gonna separately consider I and K. So unless someone else has anything else to separate out, I'm asking for a motion to approve A through H and J. The second was, is that Corey? Thank you, Corey. All right, do I have any discussion on A through H and J? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion passed. Okay. Item I. Do I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student two four four zero four for the balance of the current school year consistent with the terms and conditions of the disciplinary action taken, I assume it means prior here too? Do I have a motion? Rebecca makes a motion with a faulty microphone. We'll give you credit for the microphone.
Second.
Second from Kathy. Now, do I have any discussion among the board? Keeping in mind, my limited knowledge is that we, because it's an expulsion, there's only so much administration can tell us. But that being said, does anyone have any questions or discussion?
Let us have a question. Is the expulsion students like the last thing they wanna do?
Is that the only available option to help that student to expel them from the school?
There are many decisions that go into that decision. And along with, if you read the, the last part is important, and I can't really share, is that there is more the terms and conditions of the expulsion. It's not just that he can't come, he or she cannot come to school. There are other things that are part of that expulsion that are in place to assist him. Exactly, him or her for, yes. They don't just.
Well, I, I just, yeah, you know, I hope there are other things building up to this, not just the kid forgot a notebook, they lost a phone, you know?
Yes.
Any further discussion, questions, or comments on I? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
Opposed, aye.
Forgot about that, didn't I? Anyone abstained? Dave?
Yep.
Okay. Motion passed. Item K, consideration for approval to accept the resignation of Stacy Wiles as athletic director, effective October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion? Gary made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dave with a second. Now Kathy, you, I believe, I'll give you first crack at the discussion.
I was just wondering if we could maybe have an executive session. I, my, my concern is that, is there something that we can address? If there's room for improvement, is there anything that we can do to maintain the person? You know, is there anything that could be figured out so that we don't have people losing positions or turning down positions or resigning or whatever? Is there anything that the district could do? Do you know what I mean?
You're saying basically like an exit interview with, with Ms. Wiles, is that what you're saying? Or you're saying?
Yeah, just, like, I understand if, like, the responsibility, let's just use that. Responsibility is to break those family things going on and that person would like to be relinquished from their position. But if there's like anything in anybody's position, when they decide to step away from it, that the district themselves, that we can fine tune and tweak it and make it better and potentially not lose that candidate in that spot. Or even if they still choose to step away, that there's something that we can fix as a school that we, like, are aware of it, we can step in and we can try to, like, make it better for the next person who steps into the way.
Well, let me start by answering your question with my understanding, and then obviously we'll open it up and see what the, the board feels about it. The short answer to your question is I would say yes. It would be a permissible executive session with notice to Ms. Wiles, so that she would hopefully participate. I don't think we could compel her. But we could, we would tell her, we would really like to speak with her and offer her a chance to talk with us. And we can do that, talk about her performance in an executive session. So yes, I believe that would be an executive session. I would open it up. What does the, what does the rest of the board feel about that? Rebecca, it looks like you're on. That's not meaning the mics.
Um, I trust that the administration should be doing these exit meetings, not the board, and reporting back to the board. Otherwise, I mean, we're going above them and doing an exit meeting. I feel that that would be up to Mel and Amy to do an exit meeting. And that's just my feeling on it. I mean, I think we're getting involved in an exit meeting that, you know, it might turn into that they wanna tear up one of them too, and I'm not interested in hearing that.
Let me ask this question. If, I'm trying to think if I'm allowed to. Is that, has that happened or is that going to happen? I'm asking administration.
It does. What we've set up is, there's an online exit interview, asking questions to them and providing them an opportunity to be able to explain more fully. That has not been sent yet. I was waiting for, yeah, she's not done yet, so.
Okay, so you're hearing that there, what they're saying is, is that the, the administration currently has a process in place to solicit that feedback from an exiting employee? That's what, that's what the administration is saying.
And the employee has an option of asking for an executive session from the board, right now?
They can ask.
Right.
Yeah. Any employee could ask.
Right.
It would be up to the board to grant.
The only thing I would add, like, I guess with Dave is, well, I don't know all the details, nor do I necessarily want to. It looks to me that she forwarded her resignation letter. If she wasn't coerced, it's, it's kind of a moot point. And if she was coerced, you'll probably be hearing from her attorney soon, I would guess.
Without disvaluing a lot of information, I do wanna say, we as administration have enjoyed working with Stacy. And she has been a very good person with us. And as we go along, there have been times when we all get frustrated. And it's not just in our work here, but it's in our home life as well. So there have been other times in the last months that we have talked with Stacy, Aunt Mrs. Wiles, and, and worked through some things with her to try to work it out so that she could give us more time, or we needed to give her some more time. So we have done that at least twice now, prior to her resignation. So I feel that we have given her that opportunity. And I, I do feel that she, this is what her final decision has been.
Would it address your concern if we let them do that process and ask Amy to give us an update?
Correct, but I, you know, I didn't know any of that.
Neither did I.
I would never project to, like, know that upfront. Um, I'm just a person that would like to see the district keep continuing to thrive. So I'm, I'm the person that's gonna say, is there anything we can do so you don't go? You know what I mean? Like, those, those kind of things. Nothing negative towards anybody in the district at all. Just a thought, and if there was something, then maybe we do it.
I'm glad you asked the question, 'cause I didn't know we had that. Is that something new? Or that's what we do for everybody? Okay, so it is something new that, I'm not the only one that didn't know. This is a new, the exit interview thing is a new protocol that they're implementing.
Okay, thanks, 'cause I know some places of business are supposed to do that when you have employees leave. And I don't know that if that happens, and I was never aware. We did that here, we did not do that here. So thank you for the update on that.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion on item K?
Oh, I just wanna.
See, it's that, Richard.
I, I got it. I fixed it. Um, I just really wanna thank Mrs. Wiles for what she, what she's done for the district. I know that there's, with that job, it's a, it's a thankless job. It's lots of hours here and there. I, I've, it's been a pleasure to work with her, and I hope that it can continue to work with her in other capacities. So, thank you.
I also agree with that, Mr. Aaron. And I also wanna say that a lot of people say, why do you have two ADs? Well, here's an example why, and that's a positive thing. Um, we do have another AD, and that is Mr. Frazier. And he has already stepped into the role of picking up some situations and moving forward for our district so that our students' sports do not suffer, and that is our goal. We do not want any issues moving forward. And in the interim of deciding on a replacement or making that a second, having a second AD, we do have Mr. Frazier, who has done it in the past, and he has been very well, very proactive in getting things going and moving along, so there aren't any gaps for our student athletes.
Thank you.
One last thing, Nathaniel?
Yes.
I think I would like to, like, let Mrs. Wiles know too. As a board member that's been here, and she's been in that office and working as an AD, thank you very much for everything that she has been doing here for the school.
Thank you. And I wanted to add too, just for clarity for everybody, my understanding would be, Amy, the administrative team is gonna be developing a recommendation for the board as to what you just described, as to how to move forward, is one AD, two ADs, who will fill the role, is that correct? Okay, so for anyone with questions or wondering, that, that will be forthcoming. But for right now, Mr. Frazier's your guy. If you have questions, he's the guy to talk to. Okay. All in favor of the motion to approve item K, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any extensions? Motion passed. Do I have any other, we always, usually at the end, we just say, is anything, anybody else wanna talk about anything? And again, with the new sunshine, we can't vote on anything, but now would be the time. If you have an issue you wanna talk about and don't wanna get hit with the sunshine violation, now would be the time. Nathaniel's raising his hand, wow.
I would like to, if we could, just as a board and as administration here publicly, can we kind of just talk about discipline within the school? And how our discipline systems work, and what are the teachers' responsibilities for discipline? What, what, what does it mean? If you get a write-up, I don't, I don't know what that means, and, and kind of how we are going about just discipline in general. I understand that discipline in the elementary school would be different than discipline in the high school perhaps, but can we just kind of have a general conversation about how discipline works within our district?
You mean like a chain of command kind of thing?
Kind of a chain of a command, but what happens when you have, I guess for an example, just maybe a situation that was brought to my attention, where a student spoke very, very disrespectfully and rudely to a teacher. Now, if you, if you have a student in your classroom that is using expletives and yelling at a teacher, not necessarily threatening, but just being very disruptive and saying that, like, what, what is our course of action as a district? Does the teacher just simply ask the student to leave the classroom and go to the office? What, I guess, what are the consequences?
My understanding, my understanding, and I'll, I'll, I'll give you what I know, is that there would be a referral. I've never, I've not seen it, but I understand there's papers that they would fill out. Am I correct on this? Where they, the teachers would then refer it to, to the, the respective offices. And then from there, I'm not, I'm, I'm assuming the principals handle it, but I guess we can let them. But that's to answer your question about the teachers. That's my knowledge of what the teachers do is to refer it. Is, is that accurate? Anybody?
Can I jump in just one second before John speaks, 'cause this will be for you, John? Is there also some sort of graduated scale depending on the age of the student? I mean, there's a, obviously, K to six is a big difference, as is seven to twelve.
Yes, to be simple. You know, there's, there's a big difference between what a kindergarten student does and what a sixth grader does. There's a big difference with even in physical situations where, you know, kindergarten student, though we don't want it to happen, might hit somebody. And it's not the same as a sixth grader pummeling someone. So those things are all gonna be handled differently with the discretion of the teacher, discretion of the situation, discretion of investigations that need to happen. All, all of that. As far, and the same with, the same with cursing and, and that sort of thing. When it comes to write-ups, some, some teachers write things up that come to my office. And I honestly, I look at it and I say, hmm, I don't know if I would've written this up. And then there are other things that absolutely I think would've been written up, and I never see a write-up. So ironically, I was just speaking with Mr. Edmonds this morning about this very topic and about, like, getting it ironed out better. So that's kind of where things are right now. Did I answer your question? I mean.
Kind of goes with what Larry said there. Our, our approach, or the district's approach to discipline, do we can kind of run it as like a black and white thing? No matter the situation, if a student violates policy A, we'll handle it exactly like this. Or do, I guess, how do we handle the investigation internally? And I, I guess maybe as just a board member, I'm not entitled to know that. But I guess my concern with the discussion topic here is, you know, if an issue has escalated because of attention brought to the situation or if, if there's people that influence the disciplinary action, you know, we normally wouldn't punish a student for doing this, but because so-and-so came, brought it to our attention, we're gonna make sure we go further. Or, I mean, we stay in black and whites, and no matter what the situation is, that we're treating everyone fairly and equally. Are us to a violation of disciplinary rules?
I would say absolutely yes, as far as the fairness goes. No one has ever come to me and discussed treating anybody differently in any capacity, whether it's, you know, more harshly or going easy on them. more harshly or going easy on them.
I didn't, I didn't mean it, okay, you, I'm just saying as a whole.
Right, I, I mean, I'm just saying like in my experience, that's, nobody's ever come to me and said, oh, I think we need to take it easy on this person or, hey, you know, that person's the son of so-and-so, um, you know. Understand? I mean, that's, that's never happened for me.
I, I would agree with John on that. I, I don't know any time where there's been a person in, outside of influence now. At the high school, we do run into things when it hits to a, a tier three offense. When it's the high level and we have the police involved, there are things that shift due to their investigation that are outside of our, our handling, so once it gets to a certain point, I, I meet with Amy and we meet with solicitor and it's kind of out of our hands at that point.
Yeah, I didn't mean to say, you know, what to do, I was just asking if we treat it all the same, universal, no matter the situation. We gotta handle it, this play off.
Yeah, we, we try to. That's why the student handbooks are out there, is to make sure that, uh, we know what a tier one offense is. This is the type of, uh, discipline you get for tier one offenses, tier two is, is what happens, tier three becomes a crazy circus at times.
I was just gonna ask if we had a power, I was assuming there was some sort of a policy or explanation of what everyone's following. Mel, you're saying it's in the handbook? That would be, it's something that's already spelled out in, in our handbook.
Yeah, the majority of what we have is in the handbook and connects into it in some manner.
So to answer your question, Rebecca, it sounds like there's, there's a process in there to handle these, these referrals from the, from the teachers. And I assume our, uh, school police officer could make a referral too, right? Not just the teachers, right?
Yeah, we have aides make referrals, um, bus drivers make referrals. Uh, I've never had a cafeteria worker make a referral, but they can too.
Just for clarification. When, I guess that's what I'm asking for. I'm just asking for a clarification of some of the terms that we use. Is a referral is different than a write-up or it's the same thing? I'm, I guess I have kids, I have kids in the elementary school, I have a student in the high school and, you know, it, just in conversations, my kids will say things like, I'm gonna write you up, you know, just.
It's the same thing at the elementary. It's a disciplinary referral, a pop-up, the write-up form.
Okay, so it's basically when somebody says they're gonna write you up, that means they're going to refer your particular incident to the next level of authority? I'm not trying to be controversial about this. I'm, I'm just interested in, okay. Okay. Are you gonna? You can write me up. Okay, all right, thank you. That, I think that answers my question.
Anybody else have any questions about that or anything else?
Make a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any extensions? Meeting adjourned.